Calling the meeting to order, Monday, December 13th, 2021, 5:00 p.m. Granby Planning Board. Okay, first on the agenda is to approve minutes. And Bob, I'll let you...
Monday, September 13th, 2021, I'm good with them, or I would make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Monday, September 27th, 2021. The only correction I have there is right at the top where the members that attended are listed, and then it says "Others," need to add a member. I think that should be under the absent line. That's my only correction to that. I would make a motion to approve with the correction.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Monday, November 8th, I think we have to table that because both Jason and I were not here, and two other members that were, other than Jim, are not here.
Correct. So, agreed, it's tabled. Tabled to our next meeting.
Monday, November 22nd, 2021, I reviewed it, I see nothing to change, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So that takes care of the minutes. So that's that. We have a 5:15 public meeting, so we've got 11 minutes to go on that one.
Dakota, are you here for nothing in particular, just here?
Yep.
Gotcha. Turn around.
Oh, she's not here? Oh, I was, I texted her that I was coming late. Oh, she's down.
She did transfer that message to you.
Yeah, sorry, I had to help. So this for me?
Ah, yes, those are.
It's all a meeting.
Those are meeting minutes that we've already gone through.
Oh, okay, I see.
We're just waiting for the public hearing for 5:15 to begin.
Actually, does Ken have anything he wants to plead us on?
So I think at the last meeting, I told you that we were, PDPC was working on some grant items with the town that are specific to working with the DPW director and a couple of members of the committee that's looking at best practices in regards to stormwater. So that's something that DPW and this committee of members are looking at at the moment, and that grant lasts until the end of June. So until now in June, the planning board may take up an item if it is covered within the zoning. And, you know, it's either more than likely after the town meeting, the scheduled spring town meeting, whenever. Do we have a schedule today?
No.
But I don't have the schedule.
So there's that work that we're doing with the town on the energy resource, and that's the municipal vulnerability, took care of this plan off of Google State. Another component of that is to utilize a workshop that you guys did with the town a couple of years ago, on community rezonings, building workshop, you know, specific to climate, and some of the in-house harvesting. So one of the items that is going to be updated within this particular component of the map plan to include climate-related type ideals that come forward within that community rezoning building workshop. And so that will likely be something that is worked out with the fund with the community for a couple of meetings. And again, that's just components of the map plan, and the map plan is something that the community will take a look at.
And that would be a meeting with the highway superintendent and this group, and that committee?
Yes, so there is a committee looking at that as well. But as the planning board may, you know, know, the responsibility of the map plan, most of the planning to the planning board will have that for a pre-fulfillment, assuming, you know, if it's going to be discussed. There will be a survey that will be going out to the community in the government's public needs, that's specific to some of the paths that were identified within the plant. So again, it's, you know, there's a component of the work, but the fund is probably just, you know, some responsibility just to be aware of what's supposed to be, you know, within the work. But more than likely, I haven't really engaged and directly worked on that stuff, so my colleagues, you know, I won't share that with them, were ready to move with the grants and that. I did also get a phone call from Mr. Charlie Ham, who worked with the board on that solar bylaw amendment, and that was just a phone call in which he asked about the status of the town meeting. That's one of the questions, was the town meeting. But I think as we schedule those workshops that we're supposed to look at for the zoning bylaw amendments, more than likely, if, you know, that's something we'll ensure that we is aware of updates if we're talking about the solar bylaw, and invited to a meeting if we want to come. And then, of course, invited to the meeting for the public hearing when we look at that.
I don't remember, but I don't think that we, we as a board formally moved to approve that wording to follow the state. What's the acronym?
The Department of Energy Resources, DDOER.
Yeah. I don't know that we made that formal.
You mean the suggestion that he brought forth in the meeting, or?
Yeah.
No, we haven't. And the board, it's, that was language that satisfies that particular piece of parcel to allow for that property owner to develop solar in agriculturally protected parcel, because it's one of those particular parcels. But the board hasn't really acted on any of those bylaws other than being aware that they're trying. We'll have a public hearing, and that's when the board will make its recommendations.
Careful on those cords, George. Jason, am I moving out over by camp?
It'd be great if you could get wireless mics.
We just need to tighten it up some.
I really, really appreciate that. I talked to you about that one.
Oh, well.
Unless it's down cheaper since I'm not up here.
Seems like stuff like that, up in general, it goes.
Yeah.
Years go on.
I could talk to him. I don't have any kind of...
Yeah, this is just such a hazard.
Yeah, that's true.
The way it's built out right now wasn't that great either, but that can stay over there. We don't need to have it on top of us.
Is that true?
It's not really here, and it's not a special permit. Open up a meeting to discuss. You agree?
Well, I don't know. Swallowing in these regulations. I think you should ask Ken for clarification.
Ken, both of these applicants tonight are not special permits.
Do I suggest that?
Pardon me? No, you did not suggest it.
Okay. Yeah, those are...
So do we want to call it a hearing or a public meeting?
I mean, either/or, because it's related to the process by which you establish, the board has established Section 3, or Chapter 48, Section 9, as a public hearing under the...
Okay, all right. Go back there. Okay, new business, 5:15, we're going to open up a public hearing.
I will make a motion to close this meeting? And reconvene at the end of the public hearing?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
A public hearing to consider the petition of Alan Buregard and Daniel Darcy, owner seeking site plan approval under Section 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaws and applicable Section 3 regulations, 3.5.8, auto repair shop regarding existing business, AJ's Auto Body, site plan for proposed expansion at 39 West State Street and known as MAP 3D-C-25 in the town
So the proposed use, the site plan application and preliminary discussion with the applicant state that the proposed expansion and reorganization of the parking lot is to allow for present for presentation of additional cars for resale. Yes.
Should we continue this until the applicant arrives?
Let's see what we're looking at first here, and then we'll see whether we're going to table it or not. Is there anybody here representing this applicant, application? I don't see anything here that's... Ken, do you have any additional information from prior, other than what we have here tonight?
Other than what the board received, I don't have anything from...
So this is all you have?
Yeah, so that's my staff report, and then you have the reports and the comments from the building inspector, the highway department, and the health, board of health. But I think if the board recalls, the application that was submitted was a crude site plan with handwritten narrative that just said auto repair shop. So I think that there were some outstanding questions that we would have asked the applicant, should they be present.
Could you gentlemen sign in, please?
I don't see anything specific on what they're asking. What's that?
Sorry.
Okay, so is there, is there anybody here representing this application for the, for the applicant? Alan Buregard, Daniel Darcy, owner?
I think Dan's on his way.
Well, we just move forward with the applicant.
I'm agreed. The applicant want to present to the board what their, their intentions are?
What my intentions are?
Yes.
Well, honestly, I'm not sure why I'm here. What, I don't know what they're looking for, basically.
Are you with, are you, are you the applicant?
Yep.
And you don't know what you're looking for, or?
Well, it was, it was something to do with parking, and then it was a used car license, and it was a whole bunch of stuff. Really not clear what it is the town wants from us.
Okay.
It was a site plan approval at one point, and it was a firming at another point. So I put the application in, I submitted a site plan.
Do we, do we have this, do we have a drawing, a map of this, of the site plan?
There was one that was circulated via the email of a hand sketch. That's the only one that I know of.
So you're the owner of AJ's?
Right.
Okay. Can you explain to us what, what you're trying, what you're trying to do over there?
Well, just continue my business outside of that for 27 years.
Yep.
They're looking for a site plan approval because I think when I sent in my used car application last year or the year before, I had drawn in a couple of other cars that are down the far end of the building, closest to Pizza Palace.
Okay.
That started this whole thing. And they said I needed to get a site plan approval.
Okay, so...
They approved my license last year, but in it, it says, you know, I have a copy of the letter that sent. So it was more than that far this year.
So if I recall correctly, the selectmen sent us a letter wanting to know, basically asking if we were going to require a site plan approval for the additional, were you requiring or requesting an additional X amount of cars to be placed on the lot for sale?
No.
You were not?
Nothing to do with that. And the cars that I, the used car license that I have, the cars for sale have been in the same spot for 20 years.
So, so what has changed from the site plan?
Nothing. As far as my used car license goes, nothing. The, I don't know if you have a copy of the site plan?
No.
If you show it. So this, this is here.
Yeah, you see, the used cars are right here. This is 202, so these are the used cars. Then I sent in this one, which was a, basically a drawn out thing. Used cars are in the same spot. I probably added more cars here than I actually have here, but this is the far end of the building that we moved cars out of during the day when we were...
So this is, this is heading towards South Hadley, this direction?
Right, yeah, yeah. Since this, this original one, I had added like four employees, so they got to park somewhere. Obviously, the business has, has grown a little bit, but most of the cars that we have out front, and there's...
So you're showing these cars under repair over here? So this is, this is a new ad for parking?
Here's a, an actual, a scale.
Oh, here we go. That's more better.
Yeah, it's not, I had this done, so every nine feet is a space. So these cars here, we store in here at night, or usually behind the building. We move them out just so we have them to work.
So this is what you've proposed?
A couple of years ago, yeah.
A couple of years ago. What are you proposing today? This?
This is basically it, right there. So, I mean, I mean, they've been parking cars down there ever since I've been there. So it's really nothing new, just now they're mine.
Gotcha.
Instead of somebody else's, yeah, so...
So you familiar with this?
Yeah, so I know the board of health is asking like different things, like they're saying there might be fluids leaking from certain cars. What's all that all about? Is that because there are more cars there? Is that because there's more cars, or what's the reasoning?
I don't think there's any fluid leaking out, unless they toll them in and it has a leaking radius or a lot of...
Right, and that would be a heavy...
I have no control over...
So how many more cars you got this year than last year?
How many more cars?
Is there more? Is that why, because it says expansion of your area, so we're just...
Well, we have more cars that we're fixing, yeah. Every year, it's hopefully, it's going to be more and more and more. But if I, I don't believe Mr. Buregard is privy to the comments sent by the board of health to the planning board.
Oh.
So you're showing...
Yeah, so you can say...
Now you're showing these...
All right, these are cars under repair that we work on this side, and then these are cars that are on this side.
You might want to take a look at that.
You can keep that if you want.
All right, so we're, we're looking at, you know, your, your original site plan shows 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8...
6 used cars.
9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 parking places.
Right.
And the new site plan, 14, so I don't forget that number. You're showing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 24 additional parking. And I don't think, I don't think there's an issue with any parking going on in here.
Right.
Or here. I think what we're, what we're hearing is they're, they're taking issue with parking over here for some reason.
Well, you know, at one point, some of the guys were moving the cars further back than, than they, I think, were required to. There's a gravel line there, and I think some of them were on the grass. Again, it's only a temporary thing. So I made a point to tell them that they need to stay in this gravel area, which actually goes...
Yeah, I drove by the other day. This is all paved. It's not great paving, but it's paved. It's been paved.
Yeah.
This is probably somewhere around here, I'm writing on your sketch, but somewhere in here.
Somewhere in there, yeah. We try to, well, now we're trying to stay right on it, which actually is a little road that goes behind as well as gravel or old pavement.
Do we, Ken, do we have the, the original conditions?
But I know Will was trying to find that, and she couldn't find it.
Couldn't find it.
There are no original conditions.
Okay.
Not sure what the leaking vehicle, the roads are.
Well, it's, it's not that they're saying you have, that they're saying a precautionary that if you do have them, it's going to end up in the street. That's what their concern is. So, these are all cars for sale?
Repair.
Repair.
Yeah.
These are?
For sale.
These are for sale?
Yeah.
These are?
Repair. This is, we do our prep work over here.
Gotcha.
And that's what these are. These are cars that mostly are repaired, and if anything's leaking out of them, it's most likely going to be, not these cars, but these is going to be, if you freeze, biodegradable now.
Yeah. What about over here? What do you got over here?
Employees parked there.
Employees.
I thought that all vehicles had to be parked out of sight, that were not for sale.
Those were the cars that were being repaired for sale, the way we would buy salvage cars. And that was in an ordeal a few years back, that we parked them. Some of them they'd drop out front, we could move them right away. Trying to get away from that, but, yeah, that was an issue a few years back, that those cars, they would drop them here, and a couple days later, we would move them behind the building. So that was, that was a small issue.
Are these spaces full all the time? Are they filled all the time? Are their vehicles in each of these spaces all the time?
No, no, no. There may be six cars out here at one given time. There may be three over here. So it's not, one would be more than the other.
Okay. Well, I don't know how the whole board feels, but DPW takes no issue. Conservation hasn't responded, that I'm aware of. Building Inspector doesn't feel as though it's in his purview. The, the Board of Health takes issue with groundwater protection from, wait, in case something, we all know it slopes that way. How does the board feel about approving the additional cars, but eliminating just these for the time being? So that he can continue, he's, he's got one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, but isn't that the area that's employees parked?
No, and I think this is the part that's in question.
It is, and that's what everybody's putting up, putting up a question about. So I'm, I'm thinking, we approve everything else.
That's wrong.
Well, that's, that was, that was under the rule.
This, this pavement and gravel and stuff actually goes all the way up to the woods. And if you go down there now, if you went down, you'll see there's a big pile of gravel just inside that's kind of overgrown, because we haven't spread it out, that we spread four years ago, that's spread out.
I'm not sure why, why would this be an issue now? Because since I've been there.
It used to be all school buses.
It's been out of service places, uh, three, four times. Amy Glass was there for a few years. They parked all their customer cars there, and it's, nothing's really changed.
Well, what's changed is the Select Board permitted you to do this.
Right.
Now you're showing this, so they come to us, so we kick it out to all the other department heads, and they raise questions about, you know, what if, what if, what if?
The Select Board only has control over that. They don't have control over this. They don't have control over that.
Well, it, it opens up a site plan review. That's, that's, I, I get what you're saying, Dan, but, um.
And I mean, this is before we got a permit to put a trailer in, we had Five Star Transportation had this full of school buses, and we paired their buses on the end. And that was approved. I forget how long, that was a long time ago, before they bought the bank building.
Yeah.
So again, these cars that are here have already been over here. So these are already repaired. These are cars that have already been repaired.
They're not junk cars waiting to be repaired?
No, those are cars that are ready to be prepped for paint. That's what we're using, that's base four right now. That's it. So we might have a car there with the bumper off it and headlights out of it, but all the radiator.
So is that what they were talking about, the landscape planting? Were they wanting to maybe make a little screen so people can't see that? Is that?
I'm not sure.
No, we, I, I don't know what you're referring to, but we, there was a discussion way back when about, you know, how can we? How can we kind of clean this up so it doesn't look like cars under repair, you know? You know?
It's cars under repair. It's a repair garage.
Yeah, these, uh.
It's like trying to paint an elephant.
Well.
Yeah, I, I get it, I get it.
And if you're like that, another repair garage, yeah, cars parked all out front.
What's that?
I said with any other repair garage, your cars are out front, you know? And these, these cars don't stay out front. These go inside or in the back at night. We bring them out during the day, business hours, eight to five, they're out there. After that, they're gone. Unlike all the other garages that leave theirs out all night, we move ours in, so.
Does, any other board members have any comments? Any discussion on this?
I think we got to appease the Board of Health and, and ask the applicant to go talk to them, and so that we can get a write-off or a sign-off from them. We also got to hear from Conservation.
Well, we, we asked Conservation for comment, and we haven't heard anything.
You are correct.
So, you know, a, a no.
But we did, we did ask Board of Health, and they did come.
Yeah.
There's always been cars there. I've owned or controlled that building since 1973, and there's always been vehicles parked there, period.
Well, we reached out to the, you know, to Bob's point, we reached out to the, to the Board of Health. Let's, let's, so, so basically, these vehicles, what do we want to call them? Transient vehicles? We want to call them?
Recesses, deriva races.
You know, they're not, they're not vehicles that are, that are going to be sitting here on a regular basis. They're, they're different vehicles.
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a cue spot. Can we call it that?
Yep, yep. It's a waiting, just waiting to be brought in to there, to the paint job, to be prepped from there, to get painted, put back together, and off they go. So today, there's probably two cars there, beginning of the week. Not many. During, later in the week, there might be five, it might be four, it's different every day.
But they're not the same vehicles. They're in, they're out, and they're gone.
Right.
So it's, it's. And these aren't vehicles with mechanical issues. These are vehicles that are waiting to be painted.
Painted, prepped to be painted, right.
Prepped to be painted.
Yes.
Well, how would the board like to, to move forward with this?
I'd like to hear a comment from the other two members as well.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think we're, we're parking on space that's existing, you know? They're, they're not looking to add to the parking space, and, you know, I, I don't feel it's a use change as far as that's concerned. You know, I do, I do think we have to deal with what the Board of Health has sent us.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
So how do we, how do we want to approach the board? You want to, you want to send, send a letter for clarification? Do we want, do you want me to go have a meeting with, with, go to their?
No, I caution you on that, in that Mr. Buregard should talk to the Board of Health, because any question that's asked could turn into another question, and let the applicant handle it, and then we get a response from the Board of Health. I don't think it's up to us. I don't think it's up to us to talk to the.
Okay, all right.
The communication is between you and the Board of Health.
I disagree.
Not between Mr. Buregard.
I disagree, thank you. I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing until this is resolved with the Board of Health.
Any other comment on this?
You realize when you're talking, it's all going to be dug up next year.
You realize who's sitting here.
I realize who's sitting there, Bob. I know you very well.
Love you, darling.
All right, so.
I knew your father much better.
So, so let's, can you go to the Board of Health and get some sort of clarification? And if, and if the board doesn't mind, I would, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't mind attending with you.
All right, well, I'll make an appointment.
The board's okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
Of course, the, the whole board would be welcome to attend as well.
Right, it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, so. You know, other than their comments, I, and going down there and looking at, I, I really don't take any issue with it, other than they've got some concerns, so let's, let's go see what they've got to say.
Let's remember how all this started, from the Select Board.
Correct.
And nobody apparently can understand why the Select Board said you have to.
Well, because it, because they changed the, they changed the footprint, that's all. And you've asked.
They added these cars.
And you asked for an increase in your license for sales?
No, he didn't.
No?
No, the used car license has really nothing to do with this plan, you know, the car suspension.
My, my mistake, then. So, let's, let's do that with the Board of Health. If you can get them on, on board with what, what's there. Then I, if that being said, is this, this board? So.
I mean, isn't tonight's hearing for a special permit?
It's not a special permit.
What is it for?
It's just a site plan approval for, because it's a change of, it's, it's been changed.
There's no change in use?
No change in use, but there's been an expansion, because this.
There's been no expansion. There's no building change. That parking spot's always been there.
Dan, Dan, this is the site plan that the, the Select Board have.
Which is for the used cars?
This is the, a new site plan that's, that's.
The site plan is not really required for a used car license. For some reason, the, the planning with the Select Board, you'll have to excuse me, my brain doesn't quite function, I'm on chemotherapy.
Yeah, sorry to hear that.
But the Select Board decided several years ago, they wanted to have a site plan, and as I was told by one of the Selectmen at the time, you can just draw it out on a napkin, it doesn't matter. Because it's not required under state law, it's not required under town zoning laws or anything for a car license to have a site plan review. Now, he did go through before, when he went there and got the special permit, which is required for the auto repair shop. But that's always been a bus garage, an auto repair, an auto body shop.
Is it going to be a big deal if we just wait, try to get, get through to the, the Board of Health?
Yeah, I mean.
We just want to understand, why is he going through anything here? Why did he have to pay a hundred dollars? Why did he have to pay for a, a public hearing? When it's existing, it hasn't changed. Nothing has changed.
Well, that might be something you need to ask the Select Board, because they're the ones that started the process, right?
Pardon?
They've asked us for a site plan review, because, because what they've permitted is, then is different than now. Let's just, let's just go through the plan, go to the.
Yeah, I suppose we have to, but I.
I mean, we get a letter that they've got concerns. We can't ignore it, unfortunately. We can't just, to Bob's point.
I've always had a used car license, which nothing has changed. Even where they're parked, nothing has changed.
Even the number, nothing has changed.
Yeah, nothing's changed with the used car license. That, that's what this whole thing started from.
Okay, but, but now we're using, we're using a space over here.
We've always been using that space.
Right, I'm not using it for used cars.
I know, but you're showing this as being a used space that's different from there, so that we're looking at it, we kick it out to the department heads, and, because they, they've got expertise in their, in their line of work, and we want to know what their thoughts are. And we asked for it for a reason. They kicked it back with some concerns, so let's see what their concerns are and address them. It's, it's not a big deal. It's not going to cost you anything to go sit and, with myself.
It's hardly costing you.
It's not going to cost them anymore to go sit with the, the Board of Health and, and this, and share what your, what your intentions are.
You want that one?
Yeah, I would like this, if you don't mind.
You want that one too?
Yeah. But this is present. And I'll make a note that when you get on their calendar, I'll make a, I'll make a, an appointment to be on it as well.
That's good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
So I made a motion.
Oh, well, hang on, so. Is there, is there any comment from the, from the audience about this subject? You identify yourself?
George Arnold, 52 K R T. I find it very disconcerting here, so you need, you need a comment from these other boards, and there's nobody here for the leading boards to make a, make, make a comment. And now he's got to continue and continue and continue and get stroked around. I, I, I just don't get it. Maybe I'm missing something in the, in the scoop of things here, but something that's that important to you folks, somebody on this board should have made sure there was somebody here from the Board of Health to answer those questions, or to ask those questions.
Well, that's.
It just doesn't seem fair to me, to a, to a business that's been in a, in effect there for 27 or 28 years, and, and then runs into a, a stonewall here tonight.
Well, this is the process, George, and.
I get the process, but.
So, so now we receive, we receive, we receive comments from the public, and we address them. Not everything gets addressed or resolved the night of the hearing.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but, but.
So we get.
You made the comment that you're waiting for comments from the, from the Board of Health. Someone from the Board of Health should have been here.
We got their comments. We just got, we got them.
You know that?
Yeah, we, we.
That's what.
Yeah, he, he read them. He saw them.
Maybe I'm missing something here, and I.
So it's, it's the process. It happens in public. It's not, I don't, I don't, or a member doesn't go talk to the Board of Health and, and wrangle out the, the issue. It, it all happens in this forum, so that it's a, it's a, it's wide open for everybody to hear. We, and we take comments from the, from the public. And then sometimes they trigger other questions where we have to go back and get some, get some answers.
I'm sorry.
It's just the way the process works, George.
As well as a single member of the Board of Health is not going to speak on the Board of Health's behalf this evening, they're going to have to speak as a board.
Correct. Are there any other comments regarding this? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing until we get some more information from the Board of Health.
I'll, I'll second you.
I would suggest that you continue to date certain.
Correct.
Which we have to decide is, are we going to meet on the 27th of December?
We need to find out when the next Board of Health meeting is, so that we can get some clarification.
It's December 23rd.
They're meeting on the 23rd?
Yep.
So, 23rd. And our, our next normally scheduled meeting would be the 27th.
That is correct.
Do we have any issues with meeting on the 27th?
I, I will be absent, but I'm sure the board.
What if we meet at another night, Ken?
I will be out of town.
I see.
The whole week?
For, until the 30th.
What's, it's, this is, this is, I don't see any reason why we can't hold a meeting on the 27th.
Yeah, I, it, you know, I'll follow up with regards to whatever, you know, however the board decides to act on that date, can prepare a decision, should that be something that the board arrives at, and can have that turned over to the board that week.
Yeah, and there's no appeal period on this, correct? It's, because it's not a special permit.
No.
It's just a, it's just a site plan.
Correct.
Hearing.
Okay, so in addition to my original motion to continue the mon, Monday, December 27th at 5:15.
Do we have a second?
I'll second you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And, and George, I know the process sometimes gets frustrating. We try to do our best.
I understand.
We, we understand, most of us are business owners. We understand the frustration of going through processes that sometimes work that way, you know?
I understand you. Perhaps I misunderstood, so I think, you know, I don't think I did, but I get it.
Okay.
When we receive an application, it gets sent to various boards within the town, i.e. Highway Department, Conservation, Board of Health, typically Police-
Police, Fire, depending. A special permit usually triggers more.
So that before we have the public hearing, we can receive comment from these boards. The Board of Health didn't respond before this evening with comment recommending that this not be approved just yet until some clarification from questions that the Board of Health has.
And we, and we don't have sidebars before a meeting.
Excuse me, maybe that's the part that I, I can hear earlier. The acoustics are terrible to hear in.
Yes, they are.
I think it might have been recorded down here also.
With everybody up here whispering, uh, old people, old people, yeah, this, this stuff does not, does not help, so apparently I, I, I missed that.
I completely, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you. The acoustics are terrible, the masks. I have difficulty hearing Ken.
Sure.
PVPC rep.
I'm sitting, I'm, I'm sitting here doing, talking at a whisperer. I can't, I can't even-
Yeah. So, but anyway, that's what transpired here.
I'm, I'm good with that explanation. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, George. Okay. What time do we have here? It's five fifty-one, so we can start the five thirty P.M.
Okay. A public hearing to consider the petition of Gary Toth, applicant owner, seeking site plan approval under section six point three of the Granby zoning bylaws regarding a proposed workshop slash storage building approximately twenty-eight seventy square feet at eighty-one Pleasant Street and known as Accessors Map Three G dash one dash two in the town of Granby, Mass. The zoning district is general business.
Okay, do we have anybody here representing this application?
Gary Toth, I, I, the president of the board of health, just to give any questions, I'm concerned about the, um, stormwater thing, whereas, um, not the, to be due to the site name.
Good evening. I'm making this application, this proposal. My name is Paul Burden, and I'm a architect, registered architect, resident of Barbeque, Massachusetts. Um, my residential address is five Route of Paris, Springfield, Mass, formerly two Downing Street, Granby, Mass. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about this particular project. As stated, uh, it's the general business, general business zone, and we have the, you know, three parts, the zone part of this proposal. Uh, let's see, let's see, they produced stuff, the owner's here as well, here.
Okay. Have you seen this? Okay, so we're using a gravel parking lot?
Correct. I think you may have considered you might surface it sometime in the future, but for now, we'll-
I'm seeing dotted lines for the soil. Do we have any-
There is some natural topography that slopes in that part.
Yeah, do, do we have any, so, the, the board's concerned about where the, where the impervious area is, which is the building, which is much larger than the house that was there. Where's that water going?
Okay, it's a pitch roof, so half of the water drains toward the mountain building, which is in this area, this green space in here. The other half is picked up by, we've added, uh, gutters and downspouts at the end of the building, so the downspouts will empty into this area here, and empty into this area here, which ultimately flow into the lower part of the site, so. The parking lot will have a slight slope to it, but it'd be sloped away from the road for the first ten fifteen feet. So there's a, there's a, a lower area, like a swell that will, again, run toward that lower part of the site. So that will take any, you know, um, surplus drainage from the road area as well as the, any, any area that doesn't, you know, infiltrate, you know, doesn't infiltrate the soil to keep that gravel, and then go into that area, so. And that's a, that's a ten-foot buffer which is required, so we have ten feet to be able to, uh, you know, adapt the drainage and any of that.
What about this area here? This, this sheet flowing, is this gonna come out onto the street?
It will pitch away from, it will pitch away. It will be crowded in the middle and pitch to either side.
Okay.
There's a good size to drop off here now. It's part of the, the property already. It's a good gully that, uh, comes off the road and flows into there, so this is almost merely that whole proposal, uh, in case there's any runoff from the gravel.
I'd be happy to hear if you want me to address him.
Yes, if you would.
Here's it. As you folks heard on the last public hearing, we again sent this out for review by other boards. We received a comment from the Granby Board of Health. They've reviewed the site plans for the proposed workshop slash storage building at eighty-one Pleasant Street. The Board of Health requests the approval not be granted until submission of type of an activity plan and the plans for the groundwater, for groundwater protection, waste, I'm sorry, water and waste disposal. Gary, you can keep that. Uh, from the building inspector, in reviewing the various submissions for Gary Toth's site plan review, the only concern I have is placement on site to meet zoning requirement setbacks. The Granby Highway Department, Highway Superintendent. As requested, the Highway Department has reviewed the plans for the above project. The results of this review and any comments are listed below. Checked off is potential areas of concern that should be addressed by applicant. Potential areas of concern include drainage, erosion and, and erosion and sediment control plan.
Okay. Can you address it, can you address those in reverse order? Is that okay?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Can you address those in reverse order? Sorry, the last one.
You can do whatever you want.
Well, not whatever, but appropriate to the situation. Yes.
Well, but those are things that you have to address with those people. And like we had, like we stated earlier, and then, once they're satisfied-
No, the setback, what's, what's the setback?
Isn't it just forty?
That's what I thought. I thought he had it.
We're off forty now, so.
Forty, twenty.
I guess it's not being explained.
Or if it mentioned on the ground, thirty, forty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And twenty.
So I don't, I don't like-
I don't know what the building inspector's talking about.
Well, no, I think that they're just, they're just saying those are the issues that need to be looked at. If you want to address them back specifically, you can. That's not a problem.
Forty.
Forty, so it's like a, like a residential.
Well, it was, it was a contractor, as well, it's on the drawing, you know?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see those.
No, that's fine, it's all, I'd be happy to address them. I mean, it's, it's, that's, based on the previous discussion, I understand it's the process, so we'll be happy to go back to that, so. And we can address each one separately, each of these departments. I assume then they would have a chance to respond back to you, as I those issues.
Well, that's what we certainly hope.
This site plan, they did not see, this is a newer site plan, uh, that would-
Developed after our last signing.
Right, right, this is a month ago, so, they didn't probably see the design here, at least the setup.
Right, this was not something that was included in the package, to the various-
This, yeah, this-
Well, we did, we had to go to the other departments to do that.
Yep, yep.
Fly, they'll get the, check off those check offs next.
So, so any, any further, other than what the, the, the other boards brought to our attention?
I personally think that this is a great spot for what Gary wants to do. Right now, it's nothing more than a hole in the ground, with some caution taken around it.
Yeah, I, as lo, as lo, our biggest concern in the beginning was, and that's why you, you came out with this, is where's the water going? You, you know what happens, especially, you know, two oh two, you can't put anything on a state highway. So, all we were concerned about is where's the water gonna go, so we're not dumping water and creating hazards. Other than that, I, I speak for myself, I take no issue with it. I'm glad to see business come to town.
So would they go back to the other departments, get them to, like, assign, sign?
Well, I think we would send them out with a plan with a letter that addresses their specific concern.
Exactly.
For the Board of Health, I would, I would, uh, try to get on their meeting agenda for, I believe you said, December twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah.
So that it can be discussed. That way you're discussing with the whole board.
Yeah.
The other two entities, Highway Department and Building Inspector, you only have to satisfy one person, Highway Super and Building Inspector.
Yeah, and if you sit down with DeRosa or Dave and explain to them what you're doing, I'm sure he'll be fine with it.
Okay.
I don't wanna speak for him, but-
So would they come back to the next plan where we need to get this approved, that we have this?
I'm gonna suggest we continue this to our, to the twenty-seventh.
I will, I will make a motion to continue Mr. Toth's, uh, site plan review to December twenty-seventh five thirty P.M.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So the plant, so you, the other guys, you can catch any time.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll be in.
And, and then the, the Board of Health is just twenty-third, if you can get on the agenda, I wouldn't waste any time doing it.
Do you want me to, well, Kathy said we would be attending prior to the meeting, or should I give this to them directly?
I'd do both. Give them a chance, so you're not, you're not catching them off guard.
I would get it, I would get it, to be. The Board of Health before the-
Okay.
You know, you know, we, I never asked for any public comment on this. Did, did anybody have any comment on this? Of course.
If, uh, the applicant has, uh, settled the other departments, and their concerns have been answered, now, then they will come back to here, and I would urge the board to approve his plans and allow him to move forward.
Thank you. Comments well taken.
Are you related to Paul?
Pardon me?
Are you related to Paul?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Paul Trump, are you related?
Yeah, my cousin.
Classmate.
Yeah.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Three fifty years, actually. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good Christmas.
Thank you, you too, guys.
See ya.
Okay, back to- What's that?
Did we follow in the continuation?
Yes.
So I'd like to recommun.
Okay, okay.
You have a good one.
Good night.
Take care.
Okay, old business. Review submitted S.P.R. application for completion to post. What do you have for us, Ken?
Did you get a paper copy? I couldn't open the document.
What was that for?
That was, uh... Let me open that, and see if I can open it.
Oh, you sent something. Is that what you're talking about?
The, no, I didn't send anything. I sent those staff reports. Um, Kathy sent with the agenda two additional PDFs um, on Friday, I think it was.
Oh, yes.
Oh, it was Thursday, I think, um... It was, um, for West Stage Street. Eight West Stage, four, six, and rear portion of eight West Stage Street. Site plan review for a proposed trucks, parking, and dumpster area.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's over at, uh, Eric's property.
Hold true, West Stage. Ken, how would you feel about the submission?
Well, I mean, it does have, you know, typically when we look at site plan reviews, um, I have to determine whether or not, I'm assuming that's in the business district. Eight. Is that at the... Eight is on the south side of West, uh, Stage Street?
On the south side.
It's on the south? Okay. Usually, my process of looking at it would be to determine whether or not site plan review is the proper permitting mechanism. If the, if the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer has, if he has not provided a process by which to get permitted, which normally should be the case, would just be to determine-
So they're looking to park dumpsters there? Four one three dumpster?
That's what the site plan application suggests. Oh, it's per, within the industrial zoning district.
Pardon me?
Say, I thought that was industrial.
Yeah.
According to their narrative. My internet is slow for, um, the maps.
I read this info from Kathy quickly. Did it, uh, make references to whether the dumpsters were full or empty?
Didn't. I think, I'm guessing it's gonna be a staging area. They don't, I wouldn't imagine they would put full dumpsters there. They go right to a refuge.
Well, I would think once they're on the truck, they're, they're gone.
Doesn't mean they're as clean as a whistle when they come back.
No, but we should probably ask for clarification on that, because another department may.
Yeah, and-
Also, are they gonna put the places to be visible from the street?
I don't think, I'm not sure.
No.
I don't think this property is visible.
The, the site plan shows that it's pretty far back. There's an access road of about a gra, gravel driveway. And it looks like it's behind additional parcels. So there's, you know, access from two oh two, but it's in the back. And that's why in the narrative, it takes, it, it is covering three different parcels.
All currently owned by one person. We're not talking three different ownerships.
Correct.
But it's, it's a new use, is that why I'm concerned, the dumpsters?
Yes.
And they just be used for regular trash, you know, like, you know?
I don't think that's, I don't think there's a, there's, is there a site plan? I didn't see a site plan.
There is a site plan attached to that email that Kathy sent. So there's the site plan review application, which is a ten pages in that document. And then there's a, a third, um, file, which is the actual site plan. It's one sheet. I don't know if the board saw that.
That's the, well, it's a scale drawing, or- That's the, well, it's a scale drawing or rendering of the property lines, the current existing dwellings, buildings...
Contour lines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see all that, but where exactly are they parking this thing, planning on parking this thing? Proposed gravel area for Ohio parking, ten trucks, storage facility. Well, is everything complete for submission? Cause...
I would say that based on that, but based on the requirements for content of the site plan approval, that it looks like it is.
Okay. We need to get this out to the department heads and get this...
Yeah, it needs to get advertised, so we need to, you know, we'll prepare a public hearing notice, but more than likely you'll want to schedule this first meeting in January.
Yeah, yeah, after the first of year. Okay. What else here? I'm not gonna worry about any action items, the athlete don't have anything specific. Lily would have, Lillian would have one, if there was. So, is there any other discussion for tonight? Jason?
Nope.
Ken?
Nope.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.